Now be recorded.
Good morning, welcome to the meeting. Lander County Commissioners Meeting, Town Board of Battle Mountain and Austin Board of County Highway Commissioners, September eighth, twenty twenty-two, Lander County Courthouse Commissioners Chamber fifty, State Route three oh five, Battle Mountain, Nevada. Also via teleconference at Austin Courthouse Commission Office, one twenty-two Main Street, via audio conference by go-to meeting barring technical difficulties. Call in details, one eight six six eight nine nine four six seven nine, access code eight four nine two seven seven five seventy-three, or you can go to www.gometing.com. And Patsy, will you lead us in the pledge, please?
Thank you. Please join me in a salute to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own right.
I'll have a moment of silence, please. Lander County Commissioners may break for lunch from twelve to one fifteen P. M. Any agenda item that can be taken out of order may be combined for consideration by the public body, and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Commissioners, reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended. Patsy?
Thank you, no meetings, but a couple of things I wanted to report. The Kingston firefighters had their annual picnic. Very much a success, that was Saturday. And this coming Saturday will be the Austin Chamber of Commerce fundraiser for their wine walk. So that's coming up. And one thing I did want to just mention, you know, this, our Inflation Reduction Act, it's referred to as the IRA now, which is kind of interesting. But a couple of things in going through that, that I thought was extremely interesting. I know we're going to hear a whole lot more about it. But one was that it actually provided for full mandatory funding for the PIL program, which I thought was very interesting. And another one was actually to support continual revenue sharing payments to national forest counties. So that will affect Nevada quite a bit, too. So those two things that I picked out of that, thank you.
I do not have anything.
I don't, I didn't have any meetings. Staff reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended. Bert?
Good morning, Commissioners. So I did meet with Kenbrook from Mark Amade's office this last week, and they are moving forward with some of our bills. It looks like we're moving in the right direction and continuing to get the promises. We're going to get the money, that million dollars for the Main Street project and some other funds as well. So that's encouraging. And then, and then I did get some correspondence from some of the commission on some of these specialty projects you would like to see done within your district. If you guys could continue sending me any ideas or thoughts, then I can present them to my staff in our staff meetings. And what we do have budget for, we can, we can kind of look at getting done. And what we don't, and our bigger projects, we can look at adding to the budget for the future. So that, that helps us kind of get our expenditures and everything in order for our projects next year. And with that, everything else we have is on the agenda.
Okay, public comment for non-agendized items only. Persons are invited to submit comments in writing and/or attend and make comments on any non-agendized item at the board meeting, if any, and discussion of those comments. At the discretion of the board, all public comments may be limited to three minutes per person. Again, at the discretion of the board, reasonable restrictions may be placed on public comment based upon time, place, and manner, but public comment based upon viewpoint may not be restricted. Is there any public comment? Consent agenda, all matters are listed on consent agenda or considered routine may be acted upon by the board or county commissioners with one action without extensive discussion. Any member of the board or any citizen may request that an, that an item be taken from the consent agenda discussed and acted upon separately during this meeting. Consent agenda materials are available at the Lander County Clerk's Office for viewing, and copies are available for nominal charge. One, approval of the September eighth, twenty twenty-two agenda notice. Two, approval of the July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two meeting minutes. Three, approval of August eleventh, twenty twenty-two meeting minutes. Four, approval of August twenty-third, twenty twenty-two minutes. And five, approval of the payroll requests.
So I didn't receive any meeting minutes, did anybody, and no payroll change request. So I'll make a motion that we approve item one of the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Ryan made a motion, Kathy seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we don't have any minutes, so we'll go down to, where's payroll change request?
Payment of bills.
Payment of bills. We need to pull two one six seven two one and two one six eight one three.
Art, can you read it again? Will you read it in?
Read it number one.
Oh, for discussion, possible action, approve, disapprove, the payment of bills. And we need to pull those two.
I make a motion, we approve the balance of the bills, some of those two checks pulled.
I'll second.
Patsy made the motion, and Kathy seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I now make a motion, we approve check two one six seven two one and two one six eight one three.
I'll second.
Patsy made the motion, Kathy seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
I abstain, they're made to my employer.
Okay, number two, Battle Mountain High School. For discussion and possible action, approve, disapprove, the temporary road closure of the high school homecoming parade starting on Forest Ave. Heading west on East Front Street, then left on South Broad Street, and ending in the high school parking lot. The parade will take place on September thirtieth at twelve P. M.
Morning, ladies.
Morning. All in favor? Aye.
I am Katie Masque, and I'm the student body vice president, and this is Elsie Ariaritaga, and she is our student body secretary. And I am here speaking on behalf of Melissa Lahad, who is our student body president, who is unable to be here due to being at a golf tournament. I am here to ask for the approval of the homecoming parade route. The parade will begin at noon on September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. It will start on Forest Avenue next to Etterberry Street town, which is where we will line up, starting at eleven A. M. Once the parade begins, we will turn left onto Eighth Street and go to the stop signs. Lastly, we will turn right at the stop sign on Altamore Avenue, and loop around the Oakwood Park and end at the high school.
Who do we play? Who do we play?
Um, well, I was playing Silver State in Newington.
Silver State?
And I'm not positive who football is on here. Silver State. Oh, I was thinking of getting here.
Silver State, cool.
Well, I'll make a motion, there's no more questions, that we approve the temporary road closure for the high school homecoming parade, starting on Forest Avenue, heading west on East Front Street, then left on South Broad Street, and ending in the high school parking lot. The parade will take place on September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two at twelve P. M.
Only if you win. All in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
Thanks, ladies.
Have fun, have fun, have a good time.
Yeah, Richard, pardon me. I'd also like to add to the ladies that they will be having their bonfire that night.
Oh, yeah.
After the parade. Okay, cool, just so you're all aware, there will be a bonfire after this.
It's Thursday night, bonfire is Thursday night before that is.
Okay, so it is Thursday night, the parade is Saturday or Friday?
The parade is Friday morning, yes.
Okay.
Friday morning, yeah.
Okay, that's a, an exemption from the burn ban for that one event.
That is correct.
You'll have a truck there? You'll have a truck there?
Absolutely.
Okay, we're good. Okay, number three.
Huh?
Mm-hmm.
Did they what?
I didn't hear a vote.
I made the motion, was there a second?
Yeah.
I seconded it.
We voted.
Yeah. Did we vote, guys?
All in favor?
Aye.
Well, I said they had to win, I thought I said that after they voted. Okay, for discussion, possible action, approve, disapprove, the appointment of one individual who serves as an alternate on the Humboldt River Basin Water Authority Board, which currently has one vacancy. Terms are to attend quarterly meetings in Winnemucco on Fridays, and the volunteer is Mike Neff.
I'll make the motion that we approve Mike Neff filling in on the one individual who diserviced. Alternate on Humboldt River Basin Water Authority Board, who currently has one vacancy. Terms are attended quarterly meetings in Winnemucco on Fridays.
I'll second the motion, I'd like to thank Mike for stepping up and helping out.
Okay, J.R. made the motion. Brian seconded, any public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Patsy unanimously. Number four, Grant's Fire Solutions Quarterly Update from Holly Else. Elsey and grants applied for, grants received, and grants in progress.
Ms. Ellis isn't, isn't here yet, let me reach out and see exactly. There, there, she just walked in the door.
Come on up. Tell us about all the money we got.
We're moving along faster than normal.
Yes, I'm inspired this morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Holly.
Okay, so just really quickly, kind of an overview. Oh, I'm sorry.
Just an overview of what we've got so far already. We have two grant awards for the senior center. One for eighty-six thousand four hundred and fifty-eight, which pays for staffing and operating costs for the meals program. And then a second award for seventy-five thousand dollars, which pays for two new vehicles, one for each senior center. And then we received, oh, I'm sorry, the second award was for ninety thousand dollars for the two vehicles. Then we received a verbal award for a BLM fire mitigation grant. The actual award will be receiving in September. And that pays primarily for staffing for the Public Works Department to do fire mitigation work. And then there's a little bit of funding in there for blades, oil, hydraulic fluid, things like that for the tractors that are used for that work.
How much was that one?
Seventy-five thousand. And then we are currently working on an E-rate application, which will provide either a discount or a rebate on phone services for all of the libraries. And we anticipate that to be an annual savings of seventy-five thousand dollars. And that application will be completed in January, so you'll start saving that money in the next fiscal year. I think that Lakin just posted the RFP for that yesterday, though, so it's in the works. And then we are currently working with the U.S. Forest Service on a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar application, which will update your fire plan. Your current fire plan is almost twenty years old. And then it'll provide some additional funding for the fire department to do like tabletop exercises with the new plan. So I think the only other thing we've kind of got on the radar right now is some DOT projects. There's a lot of DOT funding out right now. And so we're reviewing each of those RFPs that come out, or the NOFOs, and trying to find a grant that sort of fits the projects that you guys have in the works right now. So those are what we have on the agenda. Any questions about those?
Any questions?
I would, I would like to thank Holly, she's been busting her tail for us. This is a lot of work in these grants, just one of these grants takes a substantial amount of time. And we're going through the fine print, making sure there are no strings attached where, you know, the big government can, can sneak in on us through, through giving us money. Holly's been doing great about reading through all that and keeping us up to date and working well with our team, so we really appreciate it, Holly.
Thank you, Holly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any public comment on that? Should I open up all these HRs, or just, no, just one at a time? Okay, for discussion, possible action, approve, disapprove, the maintenance planner and controller job description. Morning, young man.
Morning. Morning, I haven't mentioned, how are we doing? Phil's cold.
Good morning, Commissioners, for the record, Colt Nelson, Lander County Building Official.
Philip Herring, Operating Engineers.
Okay, I'll, you want me to go ahead? I can go first, if you want, Phil?
Yeah.
April, if you want to, I'll, I'll go ahead and go through just a few slides for you this morning to kind of let you know what we're thinking, some of the values that were, that we've gotten, got approved through our county manager, and give you an overall feel for what we were thinking when we thought of this position. I won't read each slide to you and bore you to death, but I will give you a summary of each one, but the first slide, once April gets it up.
Hold on a second, I just need to let you guys know that this is, this is a, a position that's already, we already have, we're just re-titling him.
And, and something else I'd like to point out before Colt gets into this, is this is Colt's, this is Colt's thing he's brought to us, but this is something that we're going to adopt, and, and you'll see it moving throughout the county. Kind of is our mission statement. It's, it's outstanding, and, and, you know, I don't want to steal any Colt's glory with, with taking it, when he offered that ahead of time, hey, if you want to make this your, your mission statement, we can, but absolutely not, this is a hundred percent Colt. And, and it's something that I would like him to get credit for putting throughout the county, because this is what we're going to start operating off of.
Okay, that, and speaking of the values, to give credit where credit is due, it is Jim Clemmer's stuff from about twenty-five years ago in the mining industry, but it's something that I've used my entire career since the time I basically learned that in leadership. And they fit perfect in the times we're in, we're going to run the planning and building department based off of these, and so far, it just makes sense even for the staff to review these and know where we're at in each section. And this position fits us perfectly, so I will read each one of these individually. Promise I won't do that with the rest of the slides, we'll go pretty quick, okay? But we do want to behave like owners, and the reason, we accept accountability for our actions and results, and we treat Lander County assets as our own. We are entrepreneur and look for opportunities to improve our system, and that's what this is about this morning. We act with integrity, operating within the letter and spirit of the law, and Lander County Code of Ethics. Number two, we act with a sense of urgency, we are decisive, take initiative, and make tough decisions when necessary, we set priorities and act on them. And number three, we're team players, we work collaboratively at all times. We respect our colleagues and those we interact with outside our organization. We listen to others for understanding and ask for help. We build trust and collaborate on our successes, and we help others improve their effectiveness. We promote confidence and trust in each other's capabilities, and most importantly, we will choose to stay positive. Number four, we will continue to improve as we work through even our maintenance programs that we're discussing today. Always committed to improvement, we build on good ideas, learn from our mistakes, and challenge the status quo. So even if things are going well, we try to look for how can we improve even more. And finally, we are always going to do our very best to deliver results. We want a clear vision of where we're going and how to get there, and we focus our resources to achieve our objectives, and we pay attention to detail and keep our commitments. And in order to deliver results, especially on our building maintenance for Lander County, we, we needed to have a position approved for somebody to plan and control our maintenance, because at this point of time, which I'll get into, it's, it's somewhat out of control. Okay? So in the building and planning department, a successful building maintenance program has numerous benefits. We can increase cost effectiveness, improve our reliability, increase machine uptime. Several things are involved with a preventable maintenance program and not a reactive program. If you go to the next slide, what we have right now is totally reactive maintenance. We wait till something blows up, burns up, breaks down, we call a contractor, go fix it. Oftentimes, well, most of the time, that's very expensive. Run to failure really doesn't work, it's just reactive. So we want to move into at least the preventative side of things, where we're looking at strategies to reduce failures of our HVAC systems, our heaters, our coolers, whatever it may be. And we can do that with a very simple preventative maintenance program, but we have to have somebody controlling and managing the maintenance, okay? So that's where predictive, if we get into predictive maintenance, which is the third ring of this, it, it, it has its challenges along with the rest of them, but that would be further down the road. We're, we just want to move to preventative, at least at this point, go from reactive to preventative. And I'll explain that on this slide.
Colt, could I ask a question here? Sorry to interrupt you, but I, I mean, it sounds, it sounds like we haven't done anything. I'm going, time after time after time, we renew maintenance agreements at big, big, you know, money. So those folks that we renew with come in on a, on a regular scheduled basis, is that right? So it's not the ones with our big maintenance contracts that you're talking about? It's our everyday, is that what you're saying?
It's, it's both. It's actually both, we have maintenance agreements and contracts that, of folks maintaining our equipment, and that will continue, we'll, we'll have that, but at the same time, continue where we plan it and we control it, is what, what we're going to start doing. Right now, it's all reactive, we wait till something fails, and then they just come in and fix it. But if we control that, we're going to reduce the downtime, and we're going to control the maintenance costs. And right now, the person that watches all that is the building official, along with all the other things that we're doing. And it just gets overwhelming, where, as you'll see in the slides, Patsy, as we move forward, the benefits are huge, we're already, just a little bit that I've asked one of our current employees that works on our staff to help me with it, we're seeing benefits and cost savings that are pretty high already, just by controlling the maintenance that's going on and planning a little bit of it, instead of just being so reactive. So that stuff will still continue, but we're going to be trimming it back, because we're going to save quite a bit of the county's money. And I think it'll make more sense to you on the, on, again, each one of these reactive, preventative, and predictive, they have challenges, especially on the predictive. You can get so involved with your maintenance program, but that's all you're doing is taking care of the computerized management system, maintenance system, that, that's all the guy will start doing, we don't want to get that. We're not going to get into vibration analysis and heat thermal stuff, that's way in the future. Not saying that we couldn't bring some of that in to even later improve further, but for right now, we're going to stick to the middle one, which is preventative. Lower maintenance costs, less equipment malfunction, and less downtime. And we can do that with our resources we have now. If you go to the next slide, and I believe it's the, the, one of the couple of examples that we're already pretty proud of, we had an HVAC system in one of our buildings malfunctioning. We had a maintenance agreement contractor that we had come in, looked at it, give us a quote of twenty thousand dollars. What, what we decided to do was have another quote given to us and ask what specifically was wrong with the HVAC system. It turned out that it was just a compressor, we replaced it for thirty-nine hundred dollars, and it's working fine today, there was nothing wrong with the rest of the equipment. So that's a, that's just a little bit of what I call controlling the maintenance costs.
So the one that actually had the warranty then, in our scheduled agreement, we didn't use?
This particular HVAC was really old, we don't even have the record of when it was put in. So it was, it was outdated, but instead of just in changing the entire system, which run to failure, a lot of times that's what they do, they come in and say, I'll just replace your system, twenty thousand dollars, where we said, wait a minute, can we have the whole system looked at, what's still good, let's keep it, and let's put the right parts in it. So we went from twenty thousand to thirty-nine hundred, and it's working fine. So example two, swamp coolers, ice machines, door latches, a lot of stuff we're farming out to contractors, business partners, where with this role being allowed, this individual's going to be doing a lot of this stuff himself, we're going to save a lot of money there. A swamp cooler, seven hundred and fifty dollars right now from one of our agreements. And that's a lot of money just to, you know, now, there may be more involved, but that's what each swamp cooler's costing the spring and fall. So we're going to trim all that out with this role, too. And then finally, the first steps to improve maintenance and save money is we're going to track the maintenance work orders, we're actually putting in a work order system for if anyone in the county has a building issue, they put in a work order, we can track it, we know when it's done. Perfect example of not tracking a work order, I, I assumed that the roofs were complete in Austin on our water systems. A contractor went there, looked at the roof, said, I'll get parts, we'll get it going. I found out in our department heads meeting, nobody's come back since. First I heard of it, nobody called, and I'll follow my sword, I wasn't tracking it very well, but there's nothing in the system to track it. So you wait till somebody says, hey, you didn't fix my roofs, oh, I thought that was done. We'll get all that cleaned up with this maintenance tracking system, too, because it'll be a work order that's open, we keep looking at it, it's red, we want to turn it green, it's really simple. And it will implement the preventative maintenance program, and we'll prioritize all the maintenance based off of, if the senior center goes down and people are hot, that's a priority for us. If somebody wants a man door in a maintenance shop, that, that might not be a priority for us, it's just something we'll do later, and we'll prioritize those. And our maintenance work order system has one through five priorities where we can track it. We'll monitor asset warranties, Patsy, you brought that up. We are also going to put what building we have and what equipment's in it, and track when we put something in, because you're right, when there's a warranty of ten, fifteen years, some of this stuff's being changed out, what about our warranty? Right? And we're also going to keep some of our parts, because I've asked for parts when they change something out. Oh, I threw it to the landfill. Whoa, you did, I, I'd like to look at it, right? So we're stopping that as well. It's all about control, plan, and schedule our maintenance. And, and that's, I think, the cost savings, and I'll monitor it to report later. I think it's going to be pretty phenomenal when it's all said and done, of how much we're going to save. And the goal is, the last slide there, predictive maintenance is to solve the challenges of both reactive and preventative maintenance without running to failure or replacing a healthy part, because we're throwing away, unfortunately, brand-new equipment, just replacing everything when something goes wrong. That's the easiest thing to do in parts, too, is just replace everything, and you know it all runs, right? But then it's not very cost-effective. With predictive maintenance, planned and unplanned downtime and high maintenance costs will be reduced, it, it always is. And that's kind of where we're at for the longer-term predictive maintenance system as well. We'll look at that further to even improve once we get this under control.
So you actually will have a file on, on every county building that we own?
Yes, absolutely, yep, with what's in it and everything, we'll even know eventually when it's changed. And that's simple spreadsheets and that type of thing, so we don't have that right now.
That isn't what was done, okay, thank you.
Well, I'd like to say good job, Colt, because it's, that's one of the facets of the building department, I think, we've been missing for quite some time, and you're spot on, so good job.
Phil, did you have anything to add here? Yeah, I'll add to that, so, yes, so when this came about, Liz called me, she emailed me some statistics and some job descriptions, and looking at this presentation with the, with the pay scales, and the presentation that was presented, I agree with the, with the new position in the maintenance contract, or the maintenance planner and controller job position, we'll add that into the contract. And rather than going and waiting until, what we decided was, we just come through negotiations, we didn't want to reopen negotiations in six months, so we just kind of held up, and we did this now, so we can get this in the contract now, and that, that way we can move forward with it at the point in time that we're doing it. Rather than creating an MOU, having to go through all that, steps and processes of all the attorney stuff back and forth, we decided it would probably be best to do it right now. So that's why we're here today, doing this today. So I agree with that maintenance planner controller position, and I hope, I hope you guys approve that.
Ready for motion? Yeah, we need a motion on a position, well, I'll make a motion that we approve the maintenance planner and controller job description.
And just a clarification, this is a non-exempt?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it'll be in, it would be in the contract, it would be one of the positions that's represented.
Great.
And I don't know, if you've seen the, if you've seen the pay scales, but there was four steps to that, there's four positions that go with that job title.
Brian made the motion, J.R. seconded, any public comment? Good job, Colt. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, number six, for discussion, possible action, approve, disapprove amendment to the final collective bargaining agreement with the county, with the county of Lander and Operating Engineers Local Three.
Thank you, Commissioners, Philip Herring for the record. Again, we went through this process, and like I said, we decided to do this at this point in time, rather than open negotiations back up again. So when Liz contacted me about this, I immediately, we already had the contract signed, you guys have already signed them, I had sent them over to Alameda for signatures from our officers. When I found out this was happening, I called over there, held the contracts up, so they're not in process to go to print yet, they're still in the form that you guys had them. So I was working with Liz, we're getting the, the two sheets that we need to change with the pay scales and the, the classification. And once we get done with this today, I'll send these forms over to our contracts department, we'll implement, we'll implement.
And once we get done with this today, I'll send these forms over to our, uh, contracts department, we'll implement, we'll implement those sheets into the contract. We'll change just those sheets that apply to this job position. And then our officers will go through the process of signing theirs, they'll go to the print shop and then I'll get the product, uh, the manuals back and then distribute those to the membership. So I agree with that too, so hopefully you guys agree with that.
All right, well, ready for motion?
No, I, I've got a question. I negotiated a lot of contracts when I, when I was teaching. And you hear a lot of, I don't keep up on it too much anymore, but you know, twenty dollars for flipping burgers? And I look through the salary schedule and we have people at seventeen, eighteen, twenty, and these are skilled, semi-skilled, you know, you're gonna, if you work for the county, you work for a public agency, you need training, you have to have training. And I think that we paid very well and our benefit package is superlative. Where are we gonna be in five years if burger flippers start getting twenty, twenty-five? I mean, where do you go, Phil?
That's a good question, Art, I don't know how you, how do you answer that one, because that's all economy-driven. Um, I have no answer to that one, I mean, obviously, as, as the economy and the inflation rates go up, obviously wages have to follow. And that's my job is to get those wages up, so that's what we go through the negotiation process for is. Uh, but yeah, I, I, I feel it, we all feel it in our pocketbooks every day, we feel it with the gas pumps, it's, it's, uh, it's a, something we have to deal with nationally, not just locally, and it, it hits us here harder locally than it would nationally at some points in time, so that's a hard one.
Phil, we, we appreciate you holding up on the contract so this can be added and we can do it right away instead of down the line. So with that, um, I will make a motion that we approve the amendment to the final collective bargaining agreement with the county of Lander and operating engineers local three.
I'll second the motion. That's made, motion Brian seconded, any public comment? All in favor?
Thank you, commissioners.
For discussion, possible action, approve, disapprove, previously approved job description for the building official assistant that had a clerical error, adding non-exempt to the position status.
It's just adding the non in front of non-exempt.
Need a motion?
I'll make a motion that, uh, we approve the amendment. Actually, I'll make a motion that we approve the previously approved job description for the building official assistant that had a clerical error, adding non-exempt to the position status.
I'll second.
Brian made the motion, Kathy seconded, any public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Nine. We're done? For discussion, possible action, approve, disapprove, the previously approved job description for the library specialist that had a clerical error, adding non-exempt to the position status.
I'll make a motion that we approve the previously approved job description for the library specialist that had a clerical error, adding non-exempt to the position status.
Brian made the motion, JR seconded, any public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously. Number nine, correspondence reports future agenda items.
So, Commissioner, I think, um, Mr. Fordron may wanna, uh, step back in my office with you guys, I will have to, uh, accuse myself from that because it would be something that may have a business interest to me, so I, I won't be able to be involved in that. Um, but one other thing that I would, I would like to, to maybe throw on the future agenda is, uh, is the possibility of reapproaching the hospital for the Kingston Clinic. Okay, I approached them once and, uh, and, and hopefully, um, you know, we can reapproach that and see, see what kind of.
Mr. Blake said he's looking forward to work with the county commissioners in the last meeting that he was here. And that opens the door as far as I'm concerned to get services back down in Kingston. Just because the services aren't there doesn't mean that the need has gone away. So, yeah, let's, let's, let's do that vigorously.
Okay, and then I don't know if you guys have anything else you'd like on the future agenda?
Um, I have a question on the correspondence though, um, because in going through this, I see that there's, there's some information in there that we have like a thirty-day comment period and such like that that we get. This one I'm referring to is from the Environmental Protection Division of Nevada. And we had actually, um, a thirty-day comment period which terminated August twenty-sixth. Um, and I'm, so I'm concerned about the timeliness of some of this is coming back in our correspondence. And I'm wondering if we have a date received stamp?
We do, we, uh, so a lot of these letters that are coming in, they are stamped and some of them are even, we're getting them the day that we put them in and they're, they're expiring before we get the letter. So we are, we are keeping the letters with them, so we actually have the stamp to go with it.
Okay, well, that's what I'm saying, because I would like to see these stamped when we have received them. So when we look at this, we know it isn't someone in our department that's saying, gee, I lost it for thirty days, how was I to know it was supposed to be on, whatever? So yes, that received stamp is what I want on that main letter. Um, okay, so that when we get the correspondence, we know.
You bet.
Where we are and I would appreciate that, thank you. Timeliness is important on this.
Yes, and if you guys have any responses because of the timeliness, please feel free to send me an email and, uh, and let me know if there's, if there's concerns from within your district that we should be putting together to respond to some of these. Um, there's a whole lot of projects going on, we can't be involved in every one of them, we don't have the staff to do that. Um, there's, there's multiple meetings, I know today I'm leaving and headed over to Winnebago for a meeting on, uh, on a mine project that's coming up and we just don't have the staff to continue going and a lot of these meetings overlap with meetings we're already in. So with that, we need something from you guys on any of this correspondence when you want us to reach out. A lot of these are in the newspaper, um, if you guys see any of them postings, please let us know if you want us to send something from, from the administration office, we most certainly will.
And I do need to get together with you for a litigation meeting. Okay, so we'll, we're not gonna end the meeting, end the meeting?
No, we can't, we have to come back and end it after.
Muted. Unmuted. This conference will now be recorded.
I need to make a recap of what we just did. Okay, um, where are we at here, correspondence? Public comment?
Uh, we had, no, we wanted to add something to the agenda. Yeah, future agenda items. Um, yeah, and, um, councilor, if you will help me with, I don't know exactly what we want on it, how do we want to address this? But, um, we are very concerned about the fentanyl that's some coming into our different areas and, and even our, our chair brought up that with Halloween coming, we might have something on the streets and, and I think we should, we should address this somehow, be, being proactive with perhaps a meeting in Battle Mountain and in, in the southern part in Austin and Kingston that we can, um, perhaps have law enforcement or EMS or somebody, our, our specialists that we can address to the families. But we do think we should take an active part in it because if you remember years ago, we had the Say No to Drugs program and it was really heavy, it was in the schools, it was everywhere, and we're feeling that there's not enough people saying no. And really, there's not, so we wanted to be proactive on that, so what type of an agenda item?
We can, we can certainly add that, just to add, um, a little bit to what's going on with our, with our health nurse and, uh, Dr. Ross. They've reached out to the school and we aren't getting a lot of people showing up to the few events that we have done and whether it's advertising, timing, whatever it is. So, um, some of the, some of their actions now are going to try to tie the school in to do some assemblies and get them while they're actually at their locations to, to spread this word to the, to the kids of what to be aware of and what to look for and sign. So we will, we'll add this to the agenda and, uh, and put it on our health board as well.
I am so glad to hear that they're doing that, but I think as, as commissioners, we also wanna pick up on the people that are homeschooled.
Yeah, I just think it's more of a public awareness.
Yeah.
I don't even know if it's something you could put a flyer together to say, hey, this is, uh, on the rise throughout the country, this is what it looks like, this is the clever ways they're, they're doing it, just to inform the broad public that this is what we're dealing with and it just gives them a, a just an idea of what to look out for. I think that speaks volumes, cuz I get people that, what's going on with this fentanyl, what is fentanyl, this and that, they need answers.
So family wants to see it.
You bet, we'll, uh, we'll put it on the agenda for a future agenda item and then we'll, uh, also, something else, if you guys can spread the word, um, we do have Narcan, we're giving it out for free down here at the, at the health clinic. So if you have family members, anybody that, you know, uh, put that stuff in your glove box, uh, do whatever you can because it won't hurt anybody if you give it to them, I'm not sure if anybody's familiar with that, but anybody that ODs on, um, any of the, the painkillers or fentanyl, things of that nature, if you hit them with Narcan when they go down, um, if, if that's what they're OD'd on, they come right back too. If not, then, uh, no, no harm, no foul, but it's, it's worth having around with what's happening. And a lot of these officers are having to hit these, these people with two and three doses of it to, to get them to come back too. I think, I think Unger can probably speak more to that than, than us, but I know that the health nurse is handing these things out for free to anybody that'll take them. You might be able to save somebody's life with that.
And that's another thing we could do, you could actually, we could put an article in the paper, I mean, because it's gonna spread, we've put it on social media.
We could put it on our news flyer and, and get it as far and wide as we can.
Yeah, if you took a picture of Skittles and you took a picture of the rainbow fentanyl and you held them out like that, it'd be hard to tell which was which and that's scary with Halloween around the corner.
It looks like candy.
Right.
The new stuff they're putting out and to, uh, add on with what you folks are talking about, the, uh, Lander County Sheriff's Office, we are part of the Trident Task Force and we have already had a meeting with the, uh, NDI on this. And what they're planning on doing is going into our schools, uh, working with them and, uh, like an assembly and, and giving those kids an idea of what. Uh, I believe they do have some type of flyers available or literature on this that, that falls right in with what you're saying. So I will touch bases with them and see what type they've got and, and what it can do and, uh, go from there, because you know, it, it is the kids is getting in on it. Uh, the parents sometimes are in the dark, they really don't know exactly from what we've seen when we've made the arrest or been with the parents, they're, they got a deer in the headlights, look like, my kid was doing that?
Well, that's my point.
Well, so we need to educate the parents and, and how we do that is, uh, I know that we've been, had several town hall meetings and we get thirty people there. This needs to be out to everybody, so I don't know if we need to do a flyer in the mail?
You wanna hear deer in the headlights?
Yeah.
The best way to do it is get on your Battle Mountain info and all of these social media, TikTok, that everybody's on those. Ron Unger stands up there, he shows examples, because I have thirty-second, forty-five-second video clip will get shared a hundred times and it'll get viewed five thousand times in one day. The newspaper, an assembly, those are all great, but people like videos, do a quick one, you'll be looking good.
Really?
And maybe do a couple of them, then maybe do some with kids talking about it because it draws different people looking at it and sharing it and get that out there and they like to see familiar faces cuz then there's trust that what you're saying is real.
But I still think Amy, you're correct there and I think that, uh, ties into especially the younger crowd, but still, parents, there's a lot like, I don't do social media, I don't do that, but I do read the newspaper and so I think there's, there's several mediums that need to be used to communicate, cuz it is, it is that important.
But I would share it with, like, somebody would say, look at, look at, you know, you would see it somewhere, five thousand views in one day is what you'll get. You can't compare that to anything else.
And I think Amy's right, you know, it, uh, this drug's a killer, it's not something, but we know these kids, we see it in the junior high and the high school, but they, they got no fear of this stuff at all and the parents got no idea. I mean, ah, my kid's not gonna do it, well, yeah, your kid is gonna do it some matter of when. So, yeah, we're on board and we're, we have some, uh, revenues that we can go to, some resources. Uh, so we, we, we'll be right in the middle of that with you guys and thanks for bringing that up, cuz we were at a loss on exactly what to do, so.
And, and with that, you know, I think our kids right now are really receptive and their ears are open, there's, there's been, you know, one case here locally that, you know, has touched a lot of families and a lot of kids in our schools and, and they're receptive to, right now, I think is a prime picking for us to get some word out there and some education because they're, their eyes are open.
Well, and the problem with this fentanyl, it's just not that the rainbows that you're talking about, cuz that is fentanyl. They're putting it in all of these drugs, the heroin, the marijuana, the, the methamphetamines, they're, they're doping up all this stuff, the gummy bears. I mean, it's. It is, this is, this is, this is a bad deal and it is, it's gonna kill our kids, so, anyway, we're on board with you folks.
Public comment? Motion? Motion, Jr. Brian made motion, JR seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
See you next time.